I call to order the meeting, special meeting of the Town Council for February 27th, 2018. Madam Clerk.
All, all, all councilors are present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So, we will begin, we have two items on the agenda for the Town Council's special meeting. The first is the Town of Groton Tax Increment Financing Policy.
Right, okay, so there was a, an advertisement placed in the New London Newspaper on the 17th of February that called for the public hearing for the adoption of tax, oops, I'm on tax instrument, tax increment financing policy to set in a framework for the future tax increment financing, better known as TIF, districts in the Town of Groton. Tuesday, February 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, the Town Hall Annex, Community Room One.
All set? Thank you. Yes. Could those of you in the audience please silence your electronic devices? Thank you. It gets picked up on the mics from the public access TV. All right, so we have with us tonight Planning Director Reiner, and he's going to give a very brief presentation on what TIF is.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, tonight, we are having a public hearing for the TIF policy. The policy is not setting the districts of where TIF will go. This is the how we will do TIF, again, not where the districts will go. Again, policy is really a program for how we're moving this forward. This is a procedural document. It's not the specifics of which particular parcels, which particular districts. I can't stress that enough. A lot of the questions that have gotten from people over the last couple of weeks are, why are the districts here, or why are the districts there? That's not what we're talking about tonight. This is merely the framework for how we're moving forward with TIF. So, I'll keep this brief, because we've spoken about tax increment financing a number of times, and I want to make sure there's plenty of opportunity for public comment. Very quickly, the items I just want to address, again, we've talked about TIF a number of times. Big picture, this is development that would not happen otherwise but for TIF, but for this financing mechanism. This is to support projects that otherwise wouldn't happen. These help both with public and private costs, and the incremental revenues not used specifically for the TIF purposes go to the general fund. I always like to stress that TIF is not a new tax. I think we can't stress that enough. There are a number of goals of TIF. All of these goals are within the policy, so a lot of these terms, these things are with, located within the policy, but really thinking to diversify and expand our tax base, that's one of our primary things we're trying to do. Some of the things we can utilize that TIF funding for, again, improving our quality of life for the residents in Groton. What's a TIF policy, and why do we need it? Really, the TIF policy goes into the goals and objectives, the financing mechanisms, the use of the revenues, both within a TIF district and versus the general fund, and then the use of the revenues, both town uses and developer costs. It talks about the process for the district approvals, the process for agreements with developers, and the administration, the monitoring, and the reporting. Most municipalities in Connecticut, I think we're actually the first Connecticut municipality to have a separate TIF policy, because most places are only looking at one small TIF district. We're currently discussing four, and there could be more in the future, if the need arises. After we adopt this policy, then we continue to work on those master plans. Those master plans are where the districts actually happen. The parcels of land in the districts that we're looking at, we do those consistent with our long-range plan of conservation and development, consistent with the goals and policies within this policy, and also based on the direction of the Town Council, our Economic Development Commission, our Planning Commission, that's TIF Advisory Commission. Once we adopt the master plans, we promote them so developers understand what the opportunities are, and then we continue to move forward and analyze and make sure that it's working for the town. So, that's all I really wanted to say prior to the public hearing, unless anybody has particular questions.
So, for those of you here, once we close the public hearings, we go to the full committee, the whole, and I think is, that's when the councilors can bring up any further questions that they might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will take the citizens' comments for the TIF portion of the meeting, and first up is Zell Stever, followed by Gary Wells. If you could please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the public record, please. If you have any written comments, if you could provide them to the clerk after you're done speaking, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening. Is this on? Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Zell Stever. I live at 81 Main Street. I think I've already distributed to you a copy of my written statement. I've given the clerk and the town manager a copy as well. Let me say that I'd like to go on record in support of the tax increment financing that's before you tonight. However, I have several concerns that I think need to be addressed before you make a final decision on this matter. First is that I'm concerned that this proposal, the TIF, needs to be coupled with the Groton zoning, planning, and economic development efforts to establish a streamlined, up-to-date regulation on mixed-use development for key areas in our town. That's the first thing. So, it needs to really be coupled with the efforts that are ongoing with now the zoning commission. The second is that, in this document that's before you, the maximum duration of a TIF project is now listed as 30 years, and you'll notice that in the state statute, it could be as long as 50 years. However, I think that is a very long period of time to give up those particular tax revenues, and so I would suggest that you actually cap that at 20 years, and if it turns out that in the future, longer terms are necessary, you could go back and revisit that, revisit the length of duration, and amend the policy. The third issue has to deal with the fact that this policy, as currently written, does not address conflict of interest issues, and this needs to be clearly written out and transparent for the public and the potential developers. The authorization, the terms, the scope of the TIF Advisory Committee needs to be fully spelled out in the policy. The fourth issue really has to do with, I think it's appropriate for you to get, before you make a decision, opinion from the Town, from the Town Tax Assessor's Office, the Finance Office, and from the Town Attorney, because I think they might have, all have positive impact, and might help in polishing up this particular procedure. I have a couple of more items here. I'm concerned about the fact that the TIF is, has a long discussion about municipal bonds and revenue bonds, and I, for one, like to see that separated, so that our bond policy is one, one issue, and that TIF is another issue. The sixth is that you'll see in there that it says, "Enhance the town's infrastructure development." I'm concerned about the word "enhance." If that means expand, I don't think it's a very good idea, because that gets you into all kinds of problems in the future. If a area in the town does have the necessary infrastructure, then I think this works just fine. The other point that, it does talk about what the fees might be for an applicant, company in to apply for a TIF application. However, I noticed that there is no ongoing fee that would be required for the town to review these TIF agreements as you go forward, and so there should be some consideration as to how you're going to charge for that, because frankly, when you're asking the town employees to have to review financial statements every year for the length of the TIF, this can become an expensive process, and if they don't pay for it, then you know who is going to pay for it, that's the taxpayers. And finally, in the, my eighth, final point is that the credit enforcement enhancement agreements, that is, the separate agreements that are formed when you do the individual, or do the TIF for the individual developer, I noticed that there's no public hearing process in that, in that process. Now, I realize some of the information may be confidential and would be protected under, under law, but I think it's important that you do hold public hearings to let the public know what it is exactly is going to happen with the particular TIF financing. And so with that, I'd like to thank you for holding the public hearing tonight. I very much support this, look forward to working with you as this goes forward, and I think these are some minor corrections that would, would hopefully end up assisting the town. And while John didn't explain the length of the document for the public, it's a fairly thick little document that you've got here, which is actually quite technical when you get into reading it, so it's not just a small matter, it's actually quite complex. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, because of the crowd size, we're going to limit the remarks to three minutes per speaker, please. So, we have Gary Wells, and then Chris Regan.
Hello, I'm Gary Wells. I live at 5 Route 27 in Old Mystic, or Mystic, and I represent District 5 on the RTM, which is Old Mystic Center, Groton, and Burnett's Corners. And as, I know that it's not on the discussion tonight, but Burnett's, but Center Groton is considered a likely candidate for a TIF district, and rather than go into the wonders of Center Groton, I notice in here, it says, "The purpose is to improve Groton's quality of life," and I would like to think that the TIF is going to do more than turn a vacant lot into a lump in the grand list, that we have residents there, and we should be thinking of doing things for the residents, people who live in the TIF districts. And otherwise, sounds like a good idea, and I'll get out of the way and make room for everyone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Wells. Chris Regan, followed by Peggy Roberts, please.
I'm Chris Regan, 20 Findlay Way, Stonington. We own the Groton Shopping Plaza. We're in support of the TIF to make a change for Groton. Regards, obviously, we've had our shopping centers since 1952. Our grandfather took a chance on Groton to have his first shopping center in New London County. We've been a taxpayer for 66 years, and my goal is to have a positive effect on this town. If we want to keep it as a commercial, it'll just stay the way it is, we'll make a couple changes here and there, but to be able to make it, it's a private and public partnership in regards to this. So, when you talk about the amount of years, the investment, I'm trying to attract companies from outside the area to come to Groton. I've been trying this for, since 1990, and it's been an absolute struggle, because we used to be the magic mile down Route 1, and we lost it, for whatever reason. Back in 93, nobody wanted to, we had a signage issue in this town, and that was a problem, because we weren't forward-thinking. We were like, some people make comments, "Get rid of signage, we don't need it." Well, you do, and at the, it's a, we've got to make sure there's a smart development that happens. I would love to see a mixed-use downtown, I would love to see a train stop on Long Hill Road, and that's going to involve a private and public partnership. And the amount of years definitely has to be 30, and if I can get you a train stop in Groton, you'd probably go up to 50 years, because that makes us on the map. We have to put Groton back on this map, that we're the town that matters in southeastern Connecticut, bottom line. That's how you're going to get your tax base up, and if we don't think forward, I'll tell you right now, I will applaud John Reiner and Paige Bronck in regards to the amount of work they've done in the past three years, because I've been working, I, first thing I said to them when I first talked to them, when they got hired, "TIF," because I go to the ICSE meetings in Vegas, all over the country, to all the meetings, and that's how redevelopment happens, is with TIF, and we should be using it, period, and it should be, it should be a private-public partnership that gets results, and we're for it, so hopefully everybody else is. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Roberts, followed by Craig Mellon.
My name is Peggy Roberts, and I'm the President of the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. I live in Stonington at 11 Joy Avenue, but our chamber does represent Groton as well as Stonington. Our chamber represents nearly 700 businesses and organizations in the area, and we would like to urge your support for the town to adopt this TIF proposal. Groton has not always gotten its due, with developers choosing other shoreline towns to build their projects. This proposal will enable the town to invest in itself. We understand this is not a new tax, but a tool by which to funnel the needed funding into building infrastructure or beautification in the form of support for new mixed-use development. With TIF districts, the town can look forward to high-quality, desirable projects that will result in more jobs and more dollars spent in this area. The increased development will attract more business investment, and property values will go up as well. All of this is good news for Groton. Without TIF, we'll just have the status quo. Again, we urge you to approve this plan and to give Groton the tools that it needs to invest in our collective future. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Mellon, followed by Bonnie Nalt.
Hi, my name's Craig Mellon. I live in Water Street in Mystic. I am the Vice Chair for the Groton Economic Development Commission, and want to talk to you about this and support the TIF proposal from three perspectives, from an EDC perspective, from a Town of Groton perspective, and as a member of the TIF Advisory Committee. From the perspective of the EDC, in this economy, we have precious few tools that can be effective in helping us to attract to this community activity that would be very desired in the community, and yet, it's hard to compete with other areas, giving us a tool that we can use to help bring business and activity to the community that we want is an important part. From a Groton perspective, developing this tool, which is available in a few other states and only select areas in the state of Connecticut, means that we can have something that, if implemented here, would do something for here that is not available in other areas, and therefore make it a better opportunity for people to select Groton. From a TIF Advisory Committee membership, and I think that's the one I wanted to speak to most, that's where I got to see that this was designed uniquely and exceedingly well for the Town of Groton. John Reiner and actually Paige Bronck, both, but particularly watching John, he was masterful in drawing every issue out that could possibly be drawn out, making sure that there was attention to the feedback he heard, and then, in successive meetings, changing the policy so that it would work better for this community. TIF doesn't work everywhere, particularly if it's not well-designed. What John and the Office of Planning and Development did was to make sure that this was a process which, if brought to our community, would really uniquely help us, and for that, I just can't be more appreciative that the work that was done in order to help us to be a better place. I love living here, and I hope you'll help us to make it an even better place.
Thank you. Bonnie Nalt, followed by Catherine Young.
I'm Bonnie Nalt. I live at 41 Pearl Street, Mystic, Connecticut. I was on the Town Council and a liaison on the Economic Development Commission in the past two years. Our council supported the TIF that was introduced by the phenomenal Economic Development Department here in the Town of Groton. I completely support the TIF and encourage this Town Council and town members to support this concept. We need increased revenues in this town, and this is a very economically sound method to encourage private developers to build or renovate in our Town of Groton. Please vote to approve this financing opportunity for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Young, followed by Bill Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, the Town Council, regarding the proposal. On behalf of the Groton Town EDC, and I'm Catherine Young, I'm at Bushnell Street in Groton, I submit this statement to support the draft TIF policy as presented this evening by the Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services. The overarching reason for this is to kickstart economic development for the Town of Groton in 2018, and more specifically, to provide the town with ability to create and adopt tax increment financing districts, to invest in economic enterprise by allowing public and private costs associated with development to be financed over time by increases in property tax revenues that are directly generated by the new development or redevelopment projects. The EDC is also in full support of the purpose, I mentioned the purpose, set forth in the draft TIF policy, because it is one of the top recommended priority strategies in our recently completed zoning and market analysis. In other words, by designating TIF districts and adopting TIF district master plans per the Connecticut general statutes, we anticipate the town can continue on the road to accomplishing significant improvements to, one, expand our tax base through private investment, two, to improve Groton's already enviable quality of life in place, and, three, to improve the town's ability to grow and progress economically diverse and sustainable employment opportunities for our community. In 2017, the EDC Commissioners Dowling and Mellon, whom you just heard from, actively participated with the Town TIF Exploratory Committee. Now, the EDC looks forward to our role in the process of establishing TIF districts as outlined in the draft TIF policy. We understand that, once drafted by town staff with guidance from the TIF Advisory Committee, each draft TIF district master plan will be sent to the EDC for review and recommendation. The Economic Development Commission will then review each draft district master plan for consistency with the town's TIF policy and its ability to meet the intended economic development purposes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Phil Smith.
My name is Bill Smith, and reside at 255 Neptune Drive in Groton. I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, to offer my perspectives and support for the deployment of smart economic policy tools such as TIF increment financing and the development of targeted TIF districts that are in line with our approved plan of conservation and development and the most recent market analysis. As a member of the town's TIF Advisory Committee, we were focused on delivering the overarching goals of this effort, such as improving the overall quality of life, encouraging sensible economic growth, diversification of businesses and jobs, infrastructure development, and growing the tax base. I strongly believe that the final recommendations of the team, along with the expertise of Camoin Associates, and the town's very capable planning and development staff, represent prudent economic growth policies that will be closely managed to deliver the overarching objectives of this initiative. With the added benefit of tax increment financing, the town can strengthen its package of incentives to developers to stimulate much-needed economic expansion. This is important. I returned to my hometown of Groton back in 2011, and have often heard that we need to grow the grand list. I agree. You know, expanding grand list is a key indicator of economic vibrancy. It also helps moderate tax increases by sharing the cost of town government across a larger base. There is, however, one problem. Groton's tax base over the last six years actually dropped 6%.
One minute.
We see a drop of the grand list of roughly $236 million between that time period of 2011 and 2017. We have a drop of our grand list, but we're making plans to add $75 million to the town's debt burden with the school redevelopment plan. This will increase the debt load to approximately $128 million, and the cost of servicing that debt in its peak year is roughly $11 million. In the absence of a large tax base, this burden will fall principally on homeowners. In an environment of a shrinking tax base and higher debt service costs, the town needs to do all it can do to encourage economic expansion. Support for smart economic policies such as tax increment financing and the establishment of TIF districts is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, that's all that have signed up. Did you have a correspondence from a citizen who could not be with us this evening that you wanted to mention?
Thank you, I do, from Gretchen Chipparini, who lives on Phoenix Drive. She couldn't be here, and she did provide some information, there's a map and some conceptual drawings. I will read, I will not read, because it's over, over, over the time limit.
Right, we have three minutes.
Right, so, she's in favor of, I'll basically say she's in favor of the TIF programming, but she would like to include more than what's been identified as part of the district, and include Route 1 and Route 184 corridor.
So, the full text of her remarks are available?
On file, it'll be attached to the minutes as the others are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Representative Dela Cruz?
Joe Dela Cruz, 95 Cory Road, a former counselor. I was, I was on the same council that approved us to look into this, and again, I think if you ever find yourself, and I've done construction my whole entire life, and a lot of times, most of the work that happens is before we ever get on site, and I think if you, if you create a vehicle where we can make these types of projects happen, if you're standing in Blue Black Square, or if you've ever been somewhere and asked yourself, "Why can't we do this in Groton?" A lot of times, the answer is that it was a TIF that made that happen, whether it's the Providence Place Mall, or if you're at Blue Beck Square in East Hartford. Sometimes, these large projects take the public-private investment, and this is one of those cases. So, and remember, if you do pass it, you still, it still will be an individual choice by future councils if they want each project to go through. So, this is just another tool that I fully support, and hopefully, this will stop Chris Regan from calling me every night. Again, I think, but I believe, I believe in the work. I think if you do want to make a big project or a big splash, that it has to be government and business working together, and this is just one of those perfect projects. So, we always say, "Think outside the box," and it's a cliche, but I think this is one of those, those chances that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other remarks on the TIF hearing. We will close the TIF hearing at, let's see, what time is it? It is 6:36. And we are on to 2016-0256 Merit Property Conversion. Madam Clerk.
Notice, a public hearing, February 27th, 2018. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held at the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on February 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in Community Room 1 of the Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, pursuant to State Statute 7-131N, for the interchange of the 20-plus or minus acres Merit property proposed for recreation fields and the 20-plus or minus acres of Boulder Heights property located at Zero Long Hill Road at the end of Clover Avenue, with future plans for the development of recreational trails and/or fields. This is stated on the 17th day of February, and also on the 21st of February, and the New London Day, as required by statute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Reiner is back with us for a very brief presentation on the Merit Property.
Thank you. I just want to go over a few of the requirements for the release of the development restrictions for the Merit Property. So, this is directed by state law, and some of the process that we've gone through, we signed a memorandum of understanding in November of 2016, consistent with DEEP's conversion policy, and now, we're going through that public hearing process. And the Merit Property was purchased with bond money of town bond money, $420,000, and state open space grant money, $280,000. And in order to be used as anything other than open space or recreation, the town must provide a comparable land to be devoted to recreation or conservation, and the Commissioner of DEEP must approve the substitute parcel. So, initially, as part of this process, what we're looking at, we've been working with DEEP since 2015 to find a suitable replacement property. We started off with a list of about 23 properties that we reviewed with DEEP, drove around the town, looked at some of these properties. It got brought down to an 11-property shortlist, which included both town-owned and privately-owned property. Boulder Heights was deemed suitable, and it did not add additional cost to the school project, because it was a property that the town actually received from a tax foreclosure, and the possible recreation uses for both properties don't have to be the same. That's something that DEEP had identified as we were looking at this. So, looking at the difference between location of the Merit Property and the Boulder Heights property, I think something a lot of folks know around the Merit Property, where we're sitting now, there's a lot of recreation opportunities in this area of the town. Up by Boulder Heights, there are not. Merit Property location, noticing the slopes as it goes down the hill. And in order to- And in order to use the property that was acquired as open space regardless of funding for any other use, the town does have to have a public hearing, hence why we're here tonight. So the Merit property, just some of the highlights, a little bit less than 35 acres. The appraised value is actually less than the purchase price of the property, and just some of the resources of the property. The Boulder Heights property, I walked this site today, also went out there one day last week. This, also, actually jumping back to the Merit property for one second, I do want to point out to folks that the house and the field at the top of the hill here are not part of that subject property. That property, which was about 12.6 acres, was purchased for public purposes using general fund, undesignated, unreserved fund balance. So just giving a little bit of background there. Boulder Heights, again, as we stated, the town acquired that via a tax sale, a little bit over 20 acres. The appraised value, it actually sold for about almost $3 million back in 2005, and this was a property that was actually approved for 250 units of apartments, and those approvals have lapsed. Went out on the site today, again, an existing trail that goes through the property as it is now. Lot of boulders, very interesting parcel for hiking and moving around. So why the Merit property? Why did we choose that? It's proximity to the Fitch High School, the central location, transportation, operational efficiencies, and also some of the symbiotic relationship between Merit and the existing high school. Also, the Planning Commission did review this transfer consistent. They found that this was consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development for a number of reasons as listed on the slides above. And that's all I have to present at this point in time. If there's in-depth questions, we can cover those during the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have quite a list, and again, the speaking time is three minutes. If you would please state your name and address for the record. If you have any written remarks, provide them for the clerk, please. So first we have Catherine Pratt, followed by Joan Smith. I'm going to shorten my remarks a little to be sure they're under three minutes, but the full text will be available with Betsy.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Granatowsky and members of the Town Council, my name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at 75 Front Street in Nowank. I would like to submit the following comments in regard to the proposal by the Town of Groton to release all legal use restrictions on the parcel of land on Groton Long Point Road, commonly known as the Merit property, and to place comparable legal use restrictions on the parcel of land off Fort Hill Road, commonly known as the Boulder Heights property. In 2016, without the required public hearing, the Town of Groton asked the Connecticut DEEP for permission to exchange the 35-acre Merit property open space land for the 20-acre Boulder Heights property, so the Merit property could be used as the site of a proposed middle school. I respectfully urge that this land swap be reexamined. The Merit property was purchased by the town in 1989 with the use of funds previously authorized by Groton voters in an open space bond referendum, and as such is restricted to open space conservation and recreation uses. Because a state open space grant also provided a portion of the purchase price, 40%, the town was required to execute a conservation easement in favor of the state in perpetuity. Under state law, if a town wishes to repurpose land for which a state open space grant was awarded, the town must provide comparable open space land at least equal in size and value to the land taken, to which the conservation easement will be transferred, subject to DEEP approval. Boulder Heights, the property that the town proposes as a substitute for the Merit property, is far inferior in open space value. The foreclosed on-site of a failed condominium complex, it is surrounded by major roads, housing developments, and commercial businesses. It appears to have been a dumping ground for boulders from nearby construction sites. Visitors to the property must gain entrance by navigating six-foot-high piles of boulders and unpleasant and treacherous activity. It is hard to imagine what recreational pursuits could be enjoyed by the general public there
One minute.
and the parcel's small size and isolation diminish its ecological significance. By contrast, the much larger Merit property slopes from the top of Fort Hill to Fort Hill Brook, connects to Haley Farms State Park in the Bluff Point Coastal Reserve, offers panoramic views of Fisher's Island Sound, and includes wetlands and mature forest that support an abundance of wildlife. Moreover, irrespective of any approval by DEEP, the town's use of the Merit property is restricted to open space because it was acquired as open space land using funds from a Groton municipal open space bond. The town may not use the land for any purpose other than open space without obtaining permission from the courts to modify the terms of the public trust in which it is held. Constructing a school on the land without obtaining court permission opens the town to the controversy and expense of a lawsuit. I hope the Town of Groton will begin a new search for a property that is an appropriate, unrestricted, in-legal site for a school
Excuse me, that's time, please.
while allowing ample opportunity for public input and participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Smith, followed by Richard Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Joan Smith. I live at 37 Island Circle South. Thank you for scheduling this hearing. I appreciate your willingness to offer a transparent process to identify the best replacement parcel for the Merit property, taking into consideration financial and conservation, recreation, and open space values. I am not opposed to the school project on the Merit property, but I would argue that the proposed replacement property is not equivalent or superior in open space recreation or conservation values, as required by the state DEEP and by the Groton voters in the terms of the 1988 open space bond referendum. I also recommend a critical examination of the assumptions underlying the appraisals. The Merit property has high conservation and development value. It is 35 acres, as opposed to the Boulder Heights 20.66 acres. The Boulder Heights property is divided by a steep ravine, and a section, it looked like on the map, like a finger, is high above the Ledges Apartments, squeezed between the apartments right by Cliff Face and I-95. It's virtually inaccessible to the public. The ravine is steep, it's very nice as far as ravines go, but you need, you can't get from the entrance on Culver Avenue to the far side without having to scale down granite cliffs.
One minute.
The property also is squeezed between I-95, two large apartment complexes, the Ledges and the condo, a condo nearby. The Merit property has good access. It was chosen for the project because of its location, its buildability. You can put a school and three fields on it. On the Boulder Heights, you can't even get access through the rocks. That nice path that was shown is actually a sewer line that was built, constructed in there, and the sewer line goes through the middle of the property. So as an open space parcel, we're using basically a sewer line for a path, and the access to that path is through condo projects. You can't get to that path right now from Culver Avenue because of the boulders that were dumped and because of the wetland drainage basin to the right-hand side of the path.
That's time, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Dixon, followed by Sue Sutherland.
Richard Dixon, 15 Route 27 in Old Mystic on the Groton side. I'm here because I was the guy that started this whole thing back in 1988 when I was the town councillor. I came to the council, and I said, "We need to preserve open space for in perpetuity", and the citizens of Groton at that time placed their trust in you to make sure that would continue to happen. What they're doing with this has come up probably five or six times over the past years, so the government of Groton knew this would be a problem when they selected the Merit property. They are violating statute, they're violating the public trust. Now, to those of you who've come to speak on the fact that we have a school that could go there, there is a possibility that if you do this right, you won't slow the process down much. If you do it wrong, just like North Stonington did back in the 80s when they were, the YMCA was giving, was getting some property, North Stonington violated the law, it ended up in a four-year court case with the AG involved. You, first of all, need to get an opinion from the Attorney General to make sure you're on the right track. So you should not vote tonight on this. You should investigate it further. Now, I've got some documents here that I want to give you. I don't have time to give you the whole rundown of it, but the statutes are specific. The statute, and just go back to the presentation before, what's misguided about that presentation is it's not the DEEP that has the authority.
Do you have one minute, sir?
It's you that have the authority. There's the open space description here of the deed, and it was approximately 10 acres could be used for expansion of high school and athletic fields, remaining 25 acres for the passive open space and conservation of the hillside. This is what the voters voted on back in 88. To do otherwise, and again, there's not time for me to go into all the legal theories, the fact that you could be held up under Connecticut Environmental Protection Act, under the Attorney General, you're opening up a mess if you take an action without saying, "Okay, we have to go back and redo this". The past town councils have been misled, just as you were tonight, because it is not just the DEEP. The DEEP only has a very small portion of it. Yes, they have to be involved. I'm not going to have time to do much more, so I'm going to give you the documents that I'd like to explain to you, and that way we can move forward with it. So if I can pass this on, I do encourage you to take a close look at them. It has the language that's in the referendum. I have the statutes that say if public funding was used, that has to be done. The deed itself references encumbrances using the general habendum clause that would directly tie that into the open space referendum, and the language in the open space referendum by reference becomes part of the deed. I have a lot of experience in this as a lawyer, I think many of you know that. You're going down the wrong track, and somebody is going to call the AG on this thing or file a lawsuit if you don't stop and do it right. And the last thing we want to do is have this tied up in a lawsuit. The last thing we want to do is have the school project have to be stopped. But if you do it wrong, then you're in for a multi-year process. If you do it right, it will just take a few extra steps to get it done. Boulder Heights is not the property. It has to be equal or greater, it has to include
And that's time, Mr. Dixon, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If I can pass this over, and I do encourage you to look at it.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Sorry to not be able to tell you everything.
Sue Sutherland, and followed by Eugenia Villegora, please.
Hi, my name is Sue Sutherland, and I live at 32 Neptune Drive in Groton. I serve as Chair of the Zoning Commission for the town. My comments are made as an individual and not as a town commissioner. At our most recent zoning commission meeting last week, I was very pleased to see several town councillors, members of the Planning Commission, and other interested residents attended. We are just starting discussions of one of the most significant initiatives taken thus far, which is to consider redevelopment of the Route 1 corridor and other areas. Electric boat appears to be in an expansion mode, providing what might be a one-time opportunity to ensure substantial and sustainable economic growth. In the recent past, Groton has faced challenges to offset the financial impact of a shrinking grand list. Most of the developable parcels in town have already been developed, and the town's consultants for the zoning regulation rewrite, Horsey-Winton Group, report that we are approaching full build-out. Given the shortage of buildable land, Groton needs to be fiscally prudent in planning and approving developments which will generate reasonable net tax revenue. A classic case of a different economic development with a positive economic impact is the Perkins Farm development in Stonington. The 70-acre parcel is right next to I-95, across the street from the Stone Ridge Retirement Community, and close to the Masonic Care Retirement Community. The Perkins Farm development was originally zoned and approved for a 36-watt subdivision. According to studies by Rutgers University, due to education and other costs, a single-family housing development would probably not have generated net tax revenue for the town.
One minute.
The neighbors were not particularly happy with the plan either. The Town of Stonington worked with a Perkins Farm developer to create a new Greenway Development District zoning classification, which requires 50% open space. Bottom line, now we have 90,000 square feet of medical and professional offices proposed, with townhouses, 53 of those, and 121 apartments. It's estimated by the Town of Stonington, the Perkins Farm project will generate over $1 million in net tax revenue per year. This is evidence of how creative planning can be a financial asset to the town. In summary, I think the Boulder Heights property, it was approved for a development, we should try to get it developed. To not do so, we are taking what we think is free, but in fact, we are losing millions per year on it, could be. And this would create, require some creative zoning perhaps, maybe it needs to be a higher vertical development, but I think we ought to take the time to consider it because it was approved once, it did go, it was sold for over 2.8 million, so it's something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugenia Villegora, followed by Jim Furlong.
My name is Eugenia Villegora. I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton, and I'm co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates. I'd like to begin by thanking the Town Council and staff for holding this hearing tonight, called because of a serious procedural lapse by the previous town council brought to the attention of this new town council by a vigilant citizen, Richard Voyer. The fact that this state-mandated hearing is taking place at all indicates that our new town council understands and respects the law. We appreciate the opportunity to publicly clarify why we oppose the swap but do not oppose the Groton 2020 plan for the schools. As attorney Richard Dixon explained, the law pertaining to a land swap of this nature is clear. If a municipality takes land purchased for park, recreational, or open space purposes, it must replace the land taken, the taken land with a tract of comparable or greater conservation value. To comply with the law, this town council might reconsider their January 2 resolution authorizing a conservation and public recreation easement on the Boulder Heights property because that vote was taken prior to today's public hearing. The analysis you heard earlier by Joan Smith, an experienced and successful environmental grant writer, illustrates systematically and with abundant facts why the 20-acre Boulder Heights parcel is not a suitable replacement for the far superior 35-acre Merit property. We agree with Joan Smith. Boulder Heights has little conservation or ecological benefit because it is hemmed in on all sides by housing developments and by traffic visibly and audibly rowing by on I-95. Boulder Heights is both too small and isolated in an area to be of ecological significance for wildlife or native plants, given that the property is already plagued by invasive vines and grasses.
One minute.
Susan Sutherland, with her strong qualifications in both land conservation and finance, argues that there are compelling economic reasons for choosing another property. Given Groton's shrinking grand list and shortage of developable land, the fiscally prudent and sustainable action in her view would be to develop Boulder Heights to enhance the town's tax rolls. There are many options for a comparable property swap. This isn't the place to discuss specifics. The town planners, Conservation Commission, and other land conservation stakeholders can obtain or provide information, but now is certainly the time to delay action so that a prompt and thorough search can begin for a better solution, one that will comply fully with the law and keep faith with the voters who in 1988 paid to preserve the Merit property while respecting the 2016 vote of a new generation hoping to upgrade Groton schools. Thank you very much.
And that's time, thank you. Jim Furlong, and then Liz Reisbeck.
Good evening. My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fish Town Lane in Mystic. I plan to read to you tonight a very short summary of a lengthy paper by On the Merit and Property in Boulder Heights by Alisa Wright, who lives at 51 Pearl Street in Nowank. I have passed out her full paper for you to read. My summary will be only My summary will be only, it will only touch on highlights, the long paper is thorough, and I would call it must-reading, Alisa Wright has a deep knowledge and long experience with this matter. Alisa begins by reviewing the history of the property, and she says, "It's subject to the town's bond referendum ordinance dedication, which restricts the uses of the parcel to open space conservation and recreation. The principles of dedication run with the land and are binding on the town of Groton. They should have been incorporated in the deed, but never were," which is an omission which may have contributed to the present, what she calls the present tangled mess. "The property is also subject to separate covenants and agreements with the state. Fast forward to 2014, and the proposal to take the Merit property open space, which is encumbered by conservation restrictions, and to utilize it for different inconsistent public space, namely construction of a new school. Taking into account not only the state-held conservation easement, but also the separate dedication and restrictions on use of the property as reflected in the open space bond referendum appropriating local tax dollars for its purpose, the process accompanying that provision was seriously flawed." Then she goes into the flaws that-
Do you have one minute?
Okay. "The Merit property and the five other parcels that were acquired for the public during the bond process are subject to the public trust doctrine. I submit that the Merit property cannot be converted to other uses except as authorized by the court under legal principles applicable to such cases, such as cyprah and/or approximation. Unless and until the town applies it to the court to exercise its powers under this doctrine of cyprah or approximation, a legal cloud surrounds the diversion of this property." Second, she takes the town to account by failing to engage in a free, open, and transparent process required by the DEP to get the DEP's approval. She concludes by saying, "The manner in which the Merit property was grabbed for a school under the shroud of darkness and without necessary clear and open procedures, including judicial decree of cyprah, establishes a dangerous precedent, and also casts a dark shadow over the fate of the five open space conservation and recreation lands the town acquired." She asks that if you have comments, please write her at alisawright@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Liz Reisbeck, and then Craig Kohler.
Hello, good evening, my name is Elizabeth Reisbeck, and I have a very poor voice, so I'll be very short, it'll be a blessing for us all. I live at eighty-one Main Street, and first of all, I want to say the conservationists who are here today do not oppose a school on the Merit property. We would really like to work with the town council and the town staff to find a solution to the problem that the council finds itself in right now. The key to the problem is Section seven dash one thirty-one of the state statute that says, "If any municipality takes any land for highway or other purposes, which land was purchased for park or other recreation, or open space purposes, or blah blah blah, such municipality shall provide comparable replacement land at least equal in value and per unit area size to the value and per unit area size of the land taken." I think already this evening, you had some good testimony about why the Boulder Heights property simply does not meet these requirements, and is not of equal value. I'm going to just close my remarks by saying that Groton Conservation Advocates looks forward to working with you to find a solution, to find more appropriate property, and I hope that you will not vote on this tonight, but refer it back to the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Kohler, followed by Dick Voyer.
Good evening, my name's Craig Kohler, I reside at two sixty-three Brook Street in Groton. I'm speaking tonight to urge all of you to vote in favor of the land conversion between the Merit and the Boulder Heights properties. Five years ago and one month, I sat in this very room with roughly twenty other members of the town to form the School Facilities Initiative Task Force, and begin the process of planning for the future of Groton school buildings. Our group spent many hours learning about school design, reimbursement rates, town demographics, as well as possible school site locations. In fact, we looked at over thirty possible site locations that would fit the criteria for new school buildings. None of the other properties considered met the selection criteria better than the Merit property. The proximity of the Merit property and the twelve-point-six acres of budding, the land which was purchased by the town in nineteen ninety-nine, and not subject to any use constraints to the high school, made the most sense for the location of a new centrally-located middle school, and allow for programming synergies to exist between the two schools to enhance the already-successful international baccalaureate program. The task force was well-aware that a land conversion would have to take effect for this to be the site of the new middle school. It was openly and transparently discussed at all our meetings. It was always discussed in meetings with prior town councils, and at public hearings held in this room, and at the senior center, and was the subject of an article published in the day in June of 2016, as well as part of the text of the referendum mentioning the Merit property. I think everybody who was paying reasonable attention knew the land conversion was in play-
One minute, sir.
-despite being properly noted at said public hearings. The town staff worked diligently for over a year with the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to agree to a memorandum of understanding concerning this land conversion. I never had the impression that the DEP was entering into this agreement easily, and they knew they would want, and they knew they would want a piece of property comparable to the Merit property before entering into such an agreement. The Boulder Heights is such a piece of property, the Boulder Heights property is valued more than, more, and the natural resources present there are not less than the Merit property. The Merit property will also be used for recreational value, new athletic fields will be constructed as part of the school project, adding to the number of facilities we currently have in town. So here we are. The town staff has come to an agreement with DEP on this land conversion, the town Planning Commission voted two weeks ago in favor of this land conversion, but more importantly, when the school project and location were put to a town-wide referendum, it was approved by an overwhelming fifty-three percent of the voters. It carried five of the seven districts during election year that had extremely wide voter turnout. Not approving this land conversion after so many before you, including your constituents, have studied it, voted on it, and deemed it to be in the best interest of the town, I would think to be a grave mistake. It would set back the school projects and put the one-hundred-million-dollar state grant money at risk. This town has come too far not to see this project to fruition. I urge all of you to vote yes on the land conversion between the Merit and Boulder Heights properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Voyer, followed by Harry Watson. Mr. Voyer?
Yeah, well, thank you for holding this meeting, I didn't mean to hold things up, I'm just an old man who's deaf. But anyhow, I'd like to talk a little bit about the appraisal of the property in relation to the land swap. As we all know, I guess by now, a municipality takes a property that's been dedicated to open space recreation and conservation, is obligated to provide a substitute of equal value, or least equal value, and of least equal acreage. The town has decided to build a middle school on the Merit property, and it's offered the Boulder property as a substitute. The town hired one appraiser to evaluate the fair market value of the Boulder property, and they hired a second appraiser to determine or estimate the fair market value of the Merit property. The appraiser of the Boulder property pointed out that the site had been identified as a building site for a large condominium complex, points out that that complex never developed, and he points out that the approvals on that property, or that project, have long elapsed. He notes that the Boulder property is, has limited frontage, it has a challenging topography, and he says that, he announces that any development of the property will involve, or entail, or involve or require a substantial financial investment, including the construction of a driveway at eight-hundred thousand dollars. Also, any casual, anybody who's visited the property realizes the property is littered with boulders that were probably just dumped there from various excavation sites around the town or elsewhere. At any rate, he, the appraiser, assigned a value of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the twenty-point-seven-one acres. Amazingly, that valuation is very close to the valuation of seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars that the town reports on its GIS site. The second appraiser-
One minute, sir.
But-
One minute?
One minute?
One minute, yes.
Okay, let me, let me jump by the, one property, one property is restricted, that probably influenced the fair market value of the property. The other property is not restricted, so it's gained some idea of how restriction might have influenced the fair market value estimates. I went to the GIS data set, and I took out, I extracted data for the Merit property, the four-twenty, for the land values and acreage. The land value is four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars, the acreage is thirty-four-point-six-four acres, and the value per acre is twelve point, twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. There's a second property up there on the Merit, on the top of Fort Hill, it was once owned by the Merit property, it was, I guess, was sold or transferred to the town of Groton. It has a land value of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars, the acreage is twelve-point-six-nine acres, and the value per acre is twenty-three, twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-seventy dollars. The ratio between the value of the Merit property unrestricted and the Merit property restricted is one-point-nine. If you take that correction factor, multiply the value of the land value of the Merit property restricted by four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, you come up with a new adjusted land value of eight-hundred-and-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-seven thousand five-hundred dollars. That value is in keeping with the seven-hundred-thousand dollars the town initially paid for the property, the land value, or the per acre value now is twenty-three dollars and thirty, twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eleven dollars, and that's comparable to the twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-seven dollars of the, of the Merit property unrestricted.
That's time, sir.
So it would seem that the, that the restrictions had a big impact on the, on the property. The difference between the Merit property and the Boulder property really isn't that great. In fact, the Merit property, or the Boulder property is now less valuable than the Merit property. It's not a good swap.
Thank you. Harry Watson, followed by Bruce Avery.
Hi, my name's Harry Watson, I live at one seventy-five Shenacasa Parkway in Groton. And Patrice, our Madam Mayor, don't have to set your watch, I'm not going to be very long.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. And Mr. Dixon, I'm probably one of the few people that remembers you being on the council back in, back in the early nineties, late eighties.
Oh, you took my seat, all right.
Yeah, I also took your seat on open space chair back in the early nineties, too. I'm in favor of you passing, letting this go. Too many people have worked too long, and you're hearing lots of things, and I'm not going to say a lot, because Craig Kohler said it all. Please, did you hand him?
Yes.
No, so if you just read what he said, I completely agree with everything that he said. It's, God, there's more people here tonight than we get at public hearings for the budget. I mean, this is, this is a, and I'm glad that I'm not sitting up there tonight, this is a tough one for you guys. But please vote to get this going, too many people have worked too hard, too much money's been spent. Just take the time to review everything that's been done up until this point, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Bruce Avery, followed by John Heller.
I'm Bruce Avery, fifty-five Spicer Avenue in Noank. Personally, I can't believe we're still talking about this after all these years. I was a kid once, maybe nobody else in this room was, but that is the worst place to possible send little kids I can absolutely imagine. Anyway, I know we're talking about the property conversion. The taxpayers were sold on this piece of property being for conservation, recreation, or open space. The Merit family were as well, when, when they cut the deal and made the town a special deal, basically a donation. To try to pull off this land swap, I think, is stealing. To try to make that swap with that crappy little piece of land down on Boulder Avenue is unacceptable. Thank you.
John Heller, followed by Mike Grenier.
Thank you, councilors, my name's John Heller, I reside at nineteen Packer Lane here in Groton, and as Mr. Kohler said, he and I started our journey on this about five and, five years and one month ago, when Mayor Summers at the time asked, asked me to join this task force she was putting together to how to deal with the issue of having three middle schools in the failed, in the wake of the failed referendum phase two, known as Phase Two. So, so he and I, and many, many others in our community, came around this table, as we've said, for monthly meetings for, for those three and a half years. I served three mayors, I served Mayor Summers, Mayor Schmidt, Mayor Flax, and five school superintendents as we did this. As, as Mr. Kohler said, this was not done in the, my, my goal here tonight is just to, as I chaired that task force, to share with you a little bit about the journey that we went on. We did not do this in the dark of night, as he said, this was very, very open about the land swap, about, about this parcel for that parcel. It was in every one of our things, on the record for the record, in hearings in front of the, the town council, the representative town meeting. So, you know, I really am thrilled to hear this, these voices here tonight, but I, boy, I wish we'd have heard this same thing two years ago, because, you know, that would have been the right time for us to have addressed it. So, the other thing I'm thrilled to hear from our fellow town members here is that they don't oppose the plan, so I really think that's great, that if we can find a way to get to yes on this, that would be terrific. I just also want to point out that, that in May of 2014, so after working on this for a year and a half, we had a stakeholder meeting, and we had probably fifty, sixty of our community members in the room, and, and as Craig said, we looked at thirty-plus parcels, and we came down to a couple of proposals that we put in front of the stakeholder group, one of which was, was, I'll just never forget, Genevieve Surf, she was the town councillor at the time, and she had been an officer in the Groton Open Space Association, and she stood up at the end of that meeting, that two-day workshop we had in this room, and she says, "You all know me, I vote down everything, but this, this proposal, building on the Merit property, a single middle school, co-located campus with our high school, where we can get great synergies from our athletic fields and our auditoriums and, and faculty going back and forth, this proposal, I can sell, I can get behind."
One minute, sir.
So I really don't want us to get, to go back on that. We've, this is a once-in-a-generation thing, I'm all for expanding the grand list, I love being able to attract new families into our community, and whether it's the TIF, or whether it's our schools, it starts with an investment in here, and again, I'm glad that we don't hear any up opposition to this plan here tonight, but I do wish this had been on the, on the table several years ago. Thank you very much for your time and attention, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Mike Grenier, followed by Chris Conley.
Good evening, Mike Grenier, four ninety-six Noank Road, I also serve as a superintendent of Groton Public Schools. I actually began my work in January of 2014, and as soon as I got here, John Heller actually invited me to come to a School Facilities Initiative Task Force meeting, and as soon as I got there, I realized there was a ferocantic contentious debate between one middle school or two middle schools, and- one middle school or two middle schools. And so I, I said to everyone, I, I think we need to expand the, the School Facilities Task Force and add a few more people, which we call this big stakeholder group, and we met here for a day and a half. And I, I told my daughter, I thought that by the end of the weekend, we'd be able to come up with a plan, and she chuckled, because she had been on the task force for a year and a half, and basically, they, they were unable to reach consensus on, on any of these items. So we met here, and actually, in about the last hour of Sunday afternoon, there was a brainstorm session, and it came up that perhaps we could build one middle school, and that one middle school could be placed adjacent to Fitch High School. And I mentioned that the International Baccalaureate Program, which is at the high school, could be expanded through the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program in grades six through, six through 10. And that was, that was embraced right away. No sooner did I get back to my office than I got a letter from the Commissioner of Education directing me to put a plan together to address racial balance, that racial imbalances which had affected our schools. We put a plan together. I actually took the Groton 2020 Plan, because the other part of it was that when the two existing middle schools were vacated, we would then make them into elementary magnet schools. The State Board of Education approved that, that plan, told me to get back to them once the referendum was settled. I contacted them in, in, in November of 2016, and, and they, they basically wished us well and said, "Okay, the racial balancing plan is taken care of." My, my problem is three, there seems to be three process errors. One is, we've, the town manager had been working with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for two and a half years to get this property approved. The referendum took place with very large voter turnout, and so my second process that I feel is being violated here, is there was a democratic process, and that was, that was nearly a year and a half ago. And, and, and lastly, we have a racial balance plan that was carefully constructed and approved by the State Board of Education. If this does not go forward, Groton will go back to what I know everybody hates, and that is the redrawing of district lines again for over 30 years. So we, we don't want that. So thanks so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Chris Conley followed by Joe Dela Cruz.
I'd like to thank the council for your time. Chris Conley, 90 Crown No. Court, number 144 Groton. I had the privilege last night to be at the LOB as state representative for half of Groton, the other half shared by Joe, for a public hearing that lasted over 13 hours, ending at 1:30 in the morning. So I sincerely hope that you guys are out long before 1:30 in the morning and do not have to go through that same process that we did yesterday in Hartford. The benefit is your commute is much shorter than the one that we had to do in the middle of the night. But as far as this project goes, we did have a referendum where folks knew that the, the property transfer was part of the referendum when they voted. We did get state funds approved for this $220 million. Over $100 million of state funds has been appropriated towards this project, and those funds do require several things, one of which is a timeframe to break ground. I want to make sure as we take another look at this project, that we're aware of the timeframes and are not putting over $100 million of matching state funds at risk. It's very important that the, the budget process has changed with the state and school funding due to our fiscal challenges, and $100 million is certainly an awful lot of money to have on the priority list that folks certainly do not want to be at risk. I am hopeful that I've heard many folks who had issues with the transfer would like to work together to find a way where the school can be located on the appropriate sections of the parcel and have the open space of the fields and recreation still going on. Again, as we go through with, I urge the council to go through with the continuation of the, the transfer of the parcels, address some of those issues that the school is properly located on the parcels that the town does own and mostly owns, so that this project can continue, as the voters did vote for it last November. The state has provided the matching funds, over 80% reimbursement for one of the schools, and there is a timeframe to start breaking ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Dela Cruz followed by Kim Shepherdson.
Thank you, Joe Dela Cruz, 95 Corey Road. I was a member of the School Initiative Task Force. I'm not going to explain the benefits and how all the work that we, we had talked about in our group, how we were all like herding cats, and in the end, we funneled to this one decision, that this was the one property, this was the proper place, the proper time. So that discussion to me has left, and I think Chris touched on this, on the state side, I think we've moved mountains to get the money available to where it is, and I don't see an opportunity, if this doesn't go through, where, where the state's going to support us again if, if we move it. The one thing that I will note is being on the council and, and hearing properties that, again, we're 39 square miles here in Groton, Connecticut, and London is so envious of us all the time. They have six square miles and never can find a place to build something. Through this task of finding a place to build a school, we really don't have much land left here in Groton. The fact that, you know, if you count the reservoir and all these open space areas, last year, we took in 221 acres. It was the former Sanico pits that, that got granted into open space. And as a councillor, I remember telling folks that this is potential, maybe this could be built on. And, and folks that were arguing for it, it sounds like it's almost the opposite argument of this Boulder property argument. They're saying it can't be buildable, this is much better as open space, you can walk through it, it's nature, nobody will ever want to build on that property on 184. Well, now I'm hearing the opposite, how, what a great opportunity that Boulder Drive is. And if you think of where our open space is in this town, there is a warm blanket of open space wrapped around neighborhoods on my side of town, and I enjoy them every day. But when we keep demeaning the property on Boulder Drive, saying it's just two condo complexes and it's just 95, well, what about the folks that live in those condo projects? If we did develop that, don't they have the opportunity to have open space? Can't they have a spot? To me, it's a buffer between 95 and where they live. So I think, I think we shouldn't just throw out that property as a no-good property that doesn't mean anything to anybody. Because the path I saw in those photos looked like the path right down the center of Bluff Point when I'm walking that. And I'm, and I'm sure folks that live in that area would love the opportunity to just jump on their bicycle, like I do, without getting in a car, and drive safely to a park that's right in their neighborhood. And that neighborhood serves, I think there's probably 400 or 500 folks that live in that little area, probably very similar to what lives around this area. So, again, that's what, that's one area that, as far as the state goes, guys, it was a lot of heavy lifting. In the School Initiative Task Force, we vetted everything. And, and the fact that folks are saying that it wasn't transparent kind of hurts me in a way, because I was part of it. I guess the TV that was on a lot of the meetings explaining that Merit property was part of the swap, I think that wasn't transparent enough for some folks, but to, to, to go on a, on a path suggesting that it was done in the, in the middle of the night just isn't true. And, and we vetted everything, and, and to me, I wanted to develop that property that was on 95. I should have told you I was probably going to talk long. So, no, but when I do get, and in Hartford, just so you know, Chris Conley and I, we said Groton so many times, and I've, believe it or not, talked myself out of air in the room sometimes, to get the support we got in Hartford this year, to have them fund it, and the budget that we all know was very difficult, was a mountain to move. And I, I, I dare anyone to go back up there if, if our town does refuse this project or for some reason on our end it doesn't happen. So please vote in favor of this, and hopefully we have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Shepherdson followed by Robert Austin LaFrance.
Hi, I'm Kim Shepherdson Watson, 175 Shenacostet Parkway. I'm also the Chair of the Board of Education. And I just want to echo sort of what Joe and Chris said. They have been incredible partners on the past several years in helping us move the school referendum and the property swap. And it's really with, it's because of their hard work and their, and them making sure that Groton was absolutely known in the state of Connecticut. And so for that, I really thank you. And also, I just want to say, I really appreciate having two public hearings at one time, because I learned something that I didn't really think about, which was the TIF. So I really appreciate that. And it's always good to learn one good thing a day. And two, I would actually like to combine both of the public hearings, because one of the things that was said by Chris Regan, I believe, was that he wants to get Groton back on the map, and that we want to make sure that people know that this is an enviable place to live. And going through with the current plan is going to put Groton on the map, and it will continue to make Groton an enviable place to live. And that is something that we need to think about. The flip side of that, if we don't go through, not only do we lose the $100 million and possibly never get that back again, is that we will have buildings that we will need to repair and just kind of fix them up, not bring them to high standards and make them look good and have them fit the current needs of education, and guess who gets to pay for that? That will be us. So when we think about what's sort of at stake, that is what is at stake. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert Austin LaFrance followed by Mike Whitney.
Good evening. I'm Robert Austin LaFrance. I reside at 18 Cottage Place. I am also the Chairman of the School Building Committee. I want to thank our representatives for the incredible work they've done to get this money for us to do this work. I want to remind you, what we're talking about today is not a land swap. What we're talking about is removing restrictions from one piece of land and moving them to another. Without doing this, we are going to owe the state currently over $1 million. We are already in the process of designing and building the new consolidated middle school. If you begin to go backwards on this, as we've pointed out, there are time limits, we have to break ground at certain times. If we go backwards on this, we will not make these time limits. We will not have another chance to get this $100 million. I ask you very strongly to think seriously about what was going on in this room tonight and what's been going on in this town for the last five years. There can be no question that the referendum made it clear, people understood there was going to be a land swap, that the school was going to be placed on that property. It was voted overwhelmingly in favor. Please listen to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Whitney followed by Mike Doyle.
Thank you. Mike Whitney, 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive. I'm on the RTM, District Five, Chair of the Education Committee. I'm also a school parent and a volunteer there. I coach teams on our town fields, and I enjoy our open space. I hope that you'll reach the original conclusion that, to approve this land conversion and use the Merit property to build the new middle school, as the state's already approved that conversion. I, I see the Boulder Heights property as at least equal value, certainly it's valued that way, real estate-wise, and also, when I was getting my environmental studies degree, I learned that any piece of land can support many habitats, and Boulder Heights actually looks like it has a diversity of them. It's also, as mentioned, in a place where there isn't much open space, and there are great neighborhoods and apartments there that could use it. And that could be a great area with the proper vision. And for the Merit property, I must say, I'm around there a lot, I don't see many people use it, and I think it's probably because there's so much other great open space around. It's a key location for, to build a middle school, right next to the high school, and as, unfortunately, very important, it's right near the police department, too. So it's a great place for that. I, I mentioned vision earlier, so let's talk about Groton 2020 schools. A delay to Groton 2020 and the middle school construction is starkly against the democratically expressed will of our citizens in the form of the referendum that we passed. We already have wonderful open space in this town. Our schools are still striving for excellence and to rise ourselves out of this alliance school district designation. Groton 2020 is a transformative step in that direction. So I urge you to vote for the land conversion, so that education vision can be fulfilled and their children can be educated for a brighter future. And I also remind you that several months ago, our elections swept you all into the seats that you now hold, and that was in no small part because of perceived issues with how the town previously handled education, supporting our schools. And so I would view a vote against land conversion as a vote against education, and I think many other people would as well. So please listen to the voice of the people, as expressed in the referendum, as expressed in the last election, and also here tonight. Support our schools, our children, and our future, and we really can't afford any delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Whitney. Mike Doyle followed by Bruce Flax.
Hi, Michael Doyle, 15 Elm Street, Groton, Connecticut. I am also a member of the Permanent School Building Committee and sat in on the last year of the Groton's Facilities Initiative Task Force. So I'm in favor of the release of the legal use restrictions for the Merit and swap it with the Boulder Heights, so that we can build and renovate schools that the town needs for the education of our children and to continue to have good schools and the continued economic development in the town, that we saw, heard about the TIF, and so all this stuff going together is going to help out economic development. As stated in the presentation, there's a lot of open space in the eastern part of town. The open space that is in Boulder Heights will be an asset for the western part of town. Merit would be a, we walked the property, Merit would be a great educational open space resource for the Groton Consolidated Middle School, as, you know, we have plans to, we're thinking through outdoor education space, got the wetlands there, Vernal Pool, this great, it'd be a great resource for the school. And I agree wholeheartedly with Craig Kohler's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Flax followed by Jim Mitchell.
Hi, Bruce Flax, 632 Noank Road in Mystic. As a member of the prior councils that initiated this process with the School 2020 Plan and came to the decisions and the public referendum that came to fruition, I wholeheartedly support the land swap. And I, I think that there was never done under, under veil. It was undone very publicly with, and I think that the people who are suggesting that it was done under veil is, you know, were not watching the whole thing. I have articles here from the newspaper. I agree a lot with what Craig Kohler said. He said it perfectly, and Joe said that the people, you know, deserve open space in other parts of town. The, this restriction for the property swap that others earlier were talking about seems, you know, they, they were approved by the state, so they may not agree with what the state said, they may not look at how it lines up, but the, the, the fact that it was equal property for equal property was approved, and it really is the perfect property in my eyes, the Boulder Heights property, because it won't cost the taxpayers anything. If we have to go looking for another property to swap for Merit, it may cost the town money to buy that property to swap. So this really, for me, is the perfect storm. You know, I also want to look at, I think a couple people have said it, you know, if we look at open space in, in Groton, there's Avery Farm, Beebe Cove, Candlewood Ridge, Sheep Farm, the Merit Family Forest, there's state properties in Groton, Bluff Point, Candlewood, and Haley Farm. There's a lot of open space in Groton, and I think for, you know, that, this really is about student education and not about open space. I think the threats from constituents earlier are shameful, that threat, to threaten you with lawsuits, at this point, I think is, is the wrong way to, to proceed and, and speak those publicly. I think it's a little, a little bit, like too little, too late. It's been said, I think it was earlier said by those speaking against the swap, that it's up to the council, it's your decision. So I urge you to make the right decision and go forth with the education for our students in the new middle school and approve that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Mitchell followed by Andrew Meyer. I apologize if I said it incorrectly.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mitchell. I live at 47 Boulder Court here in Mystic. I'm proud to say that I've worked for the community, lived in the community for over 49 years, and I've had the honor of being involved, and so you know I have a bias, I've worked for the Board of Education for 38-plus years. So I come to you, and I want to thank the town council for your support that you've been providing to the community. You have a difficult decision tonight, just based on all of the things you've heard. After meeting your obligation, though, I, I would encourage you, after you're meeting your obligation of the public hearing, I would encourage you to immediately convene and validate your commitment to protect and advance the most important asset in Groton, and the most important asset in Groton are our children. This is really talking about the future of our community. We have, you just heard how much open space we have in the community, and so I speak to you and appeal to your open minds, because when people go to the community and look at where they're going to live, they don't look for open space, they look for schools, and they look for the future of how you're going to support and develop the community. And one of the most important assets you have in this community are the children. I request, and again urge you, to reconfirm your commitment that you've made and continue to go forward. You've heard all of the reasons for not going backwards, and as I've said, I've worked 38 years in the I've worked 38 years in the district. My last eight or nine years was as superintendent, so I can tell you and understand the difficulty you're having with this dilemma. I spent quite a few nights in meetings like this where we were talking about our referendums. The community has spoken and approved going forward. So please support the community and make the Merit property the location for the new middle school. You've heard all of the reasons and the advantages of making this move. I cannot go beyond what Mr. Kohler said. I wanted to also thank our elected officials for the work that they've done. Because if you've been here 30 years, over 30 years in the district and community, you will know that we've not always received this support. I don't want to go back. I don't want you to go back to a period of time where I was concerned when we lost millions of dollars because we did not get the support we needed in Hartford or the community here. So I wanted to thank you for the progress you've made. Thank you for investing in the future. The future is, rests with you. In the future, I believe, are the children and the commitment we make to make Groton the best school system in southeastern Connecticut. We can do that. Again, I'm proud of the system. I spent my entire career here, and my children went through the system. So I speak to the next stage of development in this community, and I ask you to support the decision that was voted in by more than 53% of the community, and that is to not delay this project. You will take us back to a period when I was involved in the district, and we don't want to go back to that. We want to continue to go forward. We want to support the Board of Education, and we want to ensure the future of this community. I was also glad to hear that the open space advocates were not opposed to the school system. And I heard solutions tonight about building on the property, using a small amount of it, and maintaining the integrity of the open space commitment. The advantages of putting the middle school on this property far exceed a delay in moving forward. The state is supporting us. Our officials are supporting us. There's no reason not to go forward. I urge you to listen to us and then make your decision. Thank you for your support. And remember, the future is not open space. It's open minds and the investment in our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Andrew Mierza and Heather Summers.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Mierza. I live at 11 Carroll Court in Groton, Connecticut. As a parent of two kids in the Groton Public Schools and as a taxpayer, I encourage you to approve the land swap and go forward with the building of the new middle school. This has been a years-long process that they're putting forward to solve the racial balancing issues and to correct problems with the schools that we currently have that are in bad shape. A lot of effort's gone into it. We have funding from the state. We've spent money to move forward and do all the studies and everything. And to waste the time and money and go back to the drawing board at this point, I think, would be a waste. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather Summers, and that's the end of the list of people who have signed up. So if anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Heather Summers. I live at 67, did I turn it off? 67 Ramsdale Street in Groton. And I first want to speak to you as your state senator, and then I want to speak to you as a parent of a child who enters, who is in the Groton school system. I want to share with you, along with Joe and Christine, what has been stated before on how difficult this was in the state to get your funding and secure it for here in Groton. Because we are fighting amongst 169 communities for funding. The idea that Groton could finally pass a referendum, what we heard in the state was, how many times does it take Groton to pass a referendum? And the fact that this community came together, and 53% of the voters said, we want to move forward on a $184 million project, it's actually unprecedented. And then for us to be able to secure the funding, again, is unprecedented in the financial crisis that we are having and experiencing here in Connecticut. So I want to share with you one of the things that happened, which was a meeting that I had with Dr. Grineer, Lenny Winkler, and the DAS Commissioner, along with a man named Costa. Costa. And we sat and huddled and talked about why we should be able to change one of the grants to a diversity grant. Now, there had only been one other diversity grant given in the state of Connecticut, and we were not on the list. So we had to convince that group that Groton deserved an 80% reimbursement on one of our schools. It took quite some time and maneuvering. But at the end of that conversation, we had a willingness there for the state to give us the 80% reimbursement, which equates to about $25 million in the difference here for the citizens of Groton. So we leave that meeting. Now we're on the diversity grant. We have all the funding. And I just want to share with you a few things. There will be no more diversity grants. That is something that, in education, they're looking to get rid of. There will be no more money for school construction based on the economic climate of the state of Connecticut. It just is not there. I just got here late because I left an education subcommittee in appropriations. I'm an appropriations member. Don't ever sign up for that committee. There is a report that will be coming out towards the end of the week that is not positive for the state of Connecticut at all. So if we don't use this money now with the will of the people, I can tell you, you will be going to an empty watering hole. There will not be money available for us to ever do a project like this ever again. So it's our chance here to make an impact for future generations for years to come. So that's my state senator's speech, and I hope that you will make the right decision and move this forward. As a mother of a seven-year-old at Butler School, the boiler is about as big as this room. It's a wonderfully maintained school, but it is well past its age. And I think it's a disservice for our students and for a future generation for us to not move this forward. When you look at what other towns have, this combined with the TIF that I'm hoping you will pass also, the TIF started years ago, and you have an opportunity now on both of these projects to push it across the finish line. You know, as someone who started the School Planning Task Force in 2011, it's gone through three mayors. It's your opportunity to show the citizens of Connecticut, I was going to say, of Groton, that this is important to you, and you want to change the way that our community is viewed. So I hope that you will make the right decision and move both of these projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, that's the end of the people who have signed up, but I saw some people come in. Does anyone else like to speak at this point?
Alex Stewart.
Certainly.
My name is Mark Summers. I live at 67 Ramsdale. I'm not as eloquent as my wife. I've never had my name stricken from the minutes. But my daughter is a proud student at SB Butler School. I am a proud graduate of public schools in Kettering, Ohio, where I grew up. Public schools allowed me to attend Yale University, where I paid for every dollar of my education myself. I'm proud of public schools. I want my daughter to stay in public schools. This is so important to me. I know open spaces are important. We can have all the open spaces we want on Thane Street, where there are no businesses that are even open or buildings that are occupied. But please, a lot of work has gone into this. A lot of work has gone to value our children. And I ask you all to put party politics aside and to do what's best for the children and our future in Groton. Thank you.
Seeing no other... Excuse me?
Could you please come up and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Town Council for this opportunity tonight.
Could you please state your name and address?
I'm getting there. Yes, I will do that. So my name is Ross Ballou. I live at 378 Hazel Nut Hill Road. I'm a youth baseball coach here in town, as well as the Vice President of Groton Little League for the last four years. I'm going to appeal to you on an emotional level tonight, if I may. Raised in Groton, product of Groton Public Schools, I work for Johnson &amp; Johnson. I don't work locally. My company is based out of New Jersey. I have been an employee for J&amp;J for 12 years. I'm 40 years old. I have three kids in Groton Public Schools. The area I cover in my professional capacity is basically every part of Connecticut, with the exception of southeastern Connecticut. So I'm everywhere else but here during my workday. This thing is really low. I feel like I'm bent over. Can I hold it? Is that okay? In fact, it would be so much easier if at any point over the last 12 years, I had picked up my family and moved to Glastonbury or Manchester, or even Old Lime with its proximity to both I-95 and Route 9. Would have made life easier for me. So why do I stay here? Well, I stay here because this is home to me. This area's always been, you know, an outstanding place to raise a family. My roots are here, as now are the roots of my children. As I travel the state as part of my daily business, I see the disparity between some of the physical buildings that other towns have and those of Groton.
One minute.
I am a proud son of Groton, Connecticut. I think my family is exactly the type of family you'd like to keep here. I ask you to please approve this land swap and build this middle school.
Thank you, Mr. Ballou. Come forward, please.
Lynn Marshall at 118 Pearl Street. I'd just like to recap what I have heard here. I've heard a lot of people talk about why we need to have a new middle school and why we need to have it next to the high school. There's been a lot of time spent on that. But I don't think that's the issue. I think I've only heard that one speaker say that that was an issue. But that's, you know, that's done and gone. But that's not the point of contention. The point of contention, as I hear it, is whether it's the swap is of equal value. And for that, I think it at least, and I've also heard about, this timeline is so important. So it would seem to me that, you know, a couple of weeks, looking at other options for a swap is not an unreasonable thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. There was another woman?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Tina McLaughlin. I live at 15 Cove Street in Noank. And I am also here to voice my overwhelming support of the plan and to urge you to go forward with the land swap that was voted on and approved by the community. I also appeal to you emotionally. I have two kids here in the public school system at SB Butler Elementary School, one of whom is a fifth grader, and will be going on to middle school next year. And it would, and then I have a son who's in third grade. And so this is very near and dear to my heart. My husband grew up in this community, and I also am a professional who does not work in this area. I work for Partners Healthcare System in Boston. And we chose to relocate from Boston when we had kids to come back to this community that my husband grew up in. And it's such a wonderful community to raise children. And we want our children to stay here and to be a part of this community for the rest of their academic career. And I beg you and urge you to go forward with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And that looks like everyone. So at this point, at 7:53, I will hereby close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Town Council meeting.
Seconded.
Excuse me?
Seconded.
Yes, so moved by Schmidt, seconded by Moravsek. All those in favor of adjourning the special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimous.